Invitation in the clerk's of the flag, please stand.
Thank you, Lord, and Ellen for this most beautiful day. Thank you for the rain. Thank all the many blessings that you've blessed us with and over our years of being on this old earth. Lord, be with all of the people here tonight and bless them that may have a good evening to this evening. Be with all of our firefighters, our men and women in the military, in and out of our country protecting us and so we can have a free world, Lord. Be with us tonight and guide all of us commissioners. May we give the best answers we made tonight and bless everybody in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and infinite.
And again, I'd like to welcome everybody for taking time out of their day to come to this meeting. Good to see plenty of attendance. And just to reiterate on what I did a couple of weeks ago, in front of Mr. Kirby and in front of Mr. Parnell down here, the request to speak cards are there. So anybody on this side of the room, if you would, just come down and fill it out. Kevin will pass it down and vice versa, the officer down there assists us down there when needed. So with that being said, staff, is there any additions or deletions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to have deleted from the agenda, item number five, HSJO five, support legislation for nine-one-one fee increase.
Okay, this is five under you. Delete it, David?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Motion to approve agenda?
Got a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Got a proclamation here. Robert, you're gonna start blurring these things. My eyes are getting better. Okay, proclamation number twenty twenty-five P dash zero-three, hazardous materials awareness week. Whereas the safe use of hazardous materials is essential to citizens, business, industry, and local government to maintain economic stability and the public health. And whereas Columbia County recognizes the importance of protecting our community from both accidental and deliberate releases of hazardous materials. And whereas it is essential to increase community preparedness for both public sector and private sector, employees know how to safely protect themselves and those whom they are responsible during accidental deliberate release of hazardous materials. And whereas Columbia County representatives participate in North Central Florida Local Emergency Planning Committee. Whereas the North Central Florida Emergency Planning Committee frees hazardous materials, emergency response, training for firefighters, emergency medical, law enforcement, and other safety personnel, as well as free shelter in place, trans- to the trainer, classes for community groups, businesses, schools, and general public as a means to increase safety in the event of a release. And whereas the citizens need to know that emergency responders, emergency management, all levels of government, schools, businesses are working together to ensure that our community is as prepared as possible to protect all citizens from both accidental deliberate releases of hazardous materials. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners in Columbia County, Florida, that February the twenty-fourth through March the second, two thousand twenty-five, hereby proclaim hazardous materials awareness week in Columbia County. Passed and duly adopted, Board of County Commissioners, signed by Jay Swisher and Tim Murphy. Anybody here to receive this?
Not saying anything, off the way.
I would just like to thank the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners for accepting this on behalf of the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Thank you.
If you don't mind, give your name so the clerk can record it, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Garrison Vandergrift with the North Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Thank you.
Need a motion to approve proclamation?
Yes, we do.
I make a motion, we approve proclamation twenty twenty-five P O three.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Jeff, I know that's an important one for you guys too, because you know the dangers that come up and down these tracks every day. The, we're fortunate. I hope it doesn't never have issues pertaining to that. Okay, public hearings, Louis Gooden.
Good evening, Mr. First public hearing we have is a, a application SD twenty-four oh seven oh two by Mr. Gu. Uh, he is petitioning a replat of bicentennial, lots twenty and twenty-one of bicentennial acres. Uh, this subdivision was planted in the early two thousands. Uh, he's looking for some relief with his insurance company, the reason he's requesting this.
Okay.
This is my district.
Yep.
So I'm moved to approve. I got a public hearing, bro.
Okay, at this time I open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed and now you can do your thing.
Okay, now, okay. Motion to approve SD twenty-four dash zero seven zero two.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before Louis gets started here, this, uh, want to explain why we do these replats now, because this is not something we did before, Mr. Gooden. I can't remember which one of y'all, but one of y'all has an issue like this in his district right now. We are now requiring this replat process before we allow people to build across boundaries. And I just wanted to thank Louis for taking the initiative to make sure this is getting done, because it's not an issue right now. It's an issue later when one of these lots gets sold and the person comes back and says, why is there a house in the middle of my two lots? So, um, want to just thank Mr. Gooden for that, make sure we understand why we're doing it.
This is putting a lot of problems behind us. We've all faced it before.
At some point in some future, me, me, we need to pass a proclamation on let him retire.
We don't have to.
Can we do that? That's something that y'all have to know about.
Uh, the next public hearing is to consider ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh six. It's a zoning application Z twenty-four twelve oh three, a petition by Mr. Brody Pack, agent for John McLean for a change in zoning atlas, uh, from RSF two to RSFMH two on the parcel described in your package. This has been noticed, uh, duly noticed and advertised and is recommended be approved by the planning's zoning board.
Okay, at this time I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero-six. Not seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is in my district. Uh, I'm well aware where it's at, have no effect on the neighborhood. And with that being said, I'll make the motion to accept ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero-six.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, Louis?
The next, uh, hearing is to, is to consider ordinance number twenty twenty-five oh seven. It's a petition, uh, it's, uh, application Z twenty-four twelve oh two, petition by Mr. Carl Bullard requesting a zoning change on lands currently zoned CI and CG to RSFMH two on those lands described in your package. It has been duly advertised and noticed and been recommended to be passed by the, uh, planning zoning board. I might, I might want to add here too, this was previously lands that were zoned RSFMH two. At some point in time in the far past, they were zoned the CG and C. And he's wanting to return it to what it was and return it to residential.
Okay. Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero-seven. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Parnell?
I make a motion, we go ahead and approve, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero-seven.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed.
Okay, the next hearing we have is to consider ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh-nine. It's application Z twenty-four eleven oh one, petition by Carol Chadwick, an agent for Smart Community Storage, requesting a zoning change on the parcel described in your package from, uh, RSFMH two to RMH dash P, which is a mobile home park.
Okay. All right, I'll declare the public hearing open for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero-nine. Anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the wishes of the board?
Uh, make a motion to approve order summer twenty twenty-five dash zero-nine.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed.
Uh, the next hearing is to consider the companion bill to the one just previously, uh, uh, passed. This is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten, zoning application CPA twenty-four eleven oh one, petition by Carol Chadwick, agent for the Smart Community Storage, requesting amendment to the future land use from residential low, low to residential medium. It's been duly advertised and noticed and it's been, uh, recommended to be approved by the planning's zoning board.
Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Wishes of the board?
Motion to approve order summer twenty twenty-five dash ten.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed.
Okay. The next hearing is to consider ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven, a petition by Carol Chadwick, agent for Pearson Trust, requesting a zoning change from AG three to CI on parcel described in your package there, um, from AGI to CI, AG three to CI. This is a business that has been south of the town along Racetrack Boulevard where it comes down on four forty-one. It's been commercial property for, uh, as long as anybody can remember. Uh, again, for insurance purposes, they needed to be zoned and described the same thing as it operating as. Um, been duly noticed and advertised and recommended to be approved by the.
Okay, I'll declare the public hearing open for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twelve. Anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Wishes of the board?
I move to approve twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Excuse me, that was, that should have been eleven. Twenty twenty-five dash eleven.
Was that eleven?
I'm sorry, yes, eleven. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I done twelve, should have been eleven.
Second, now amend in motion.
We'd need to re-vote on it. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed.
Next public hearing is, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve. It's to change the future land use map on the same parcel from, uh, AG three to commercial. Again, it's a companion bill to the previous, uh, bill. Uh, it's been duly advertised and noticed and is recommended by PNC to be approved.
I declare the public hearing open for twenty, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twelve. Anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed.
Move to approve twenty twenty-five twelve this time.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed.
Next, uh, ordinance to consider, uh, public hearing is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, application Z twenty-five oh one oh two, a petition by Carol Chadwick, a, a agent for Estrada Family Trust to change the zoning atlas of the land development regulations from AG three to, uh, from AG three and RSFMH two to ILW on the lands described in your packet. This has been duly noticed and advertised and is recommended by PNC to be adopted.
I declare the public hearing open for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen. Anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. All in favor, ooh, I'm sorry. What's the wishes of the board, Kevin?
All right, motion to approve, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thirteen.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed.
Last, the last public hearing is to consider ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. And I may want to add that initially, the description on this as it came out, there were some typos in it. Uh, the package itself that was included was correct, but descriptions had been changed to read as a petition by Carol Chadwick, agent for Estrada Family Trust, to change the future land use map from AG three and residential low to industrial on the parcel described in your package. It's been duly noticed and advertised and has been, uh, recommended to be approved by the PNC board.
I declare the public hearing open for ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen. Anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Parnell?
All right, make a motion to approve, uh, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen.
I'll second this one.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Oh, Louis, you're gonna want comp time for all that work. Mr. Paul?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Um, first item that I have for public hearing this evening, excuse me, is, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-five R dash zero four. Uh, if adopted, this resolution would opt Columbia County out of the Live Local Act's tax exemptions. Um, this has been a topic of some discussion, uh, in recent weeks. I hear a lot of chuckling. I hope the crowd was chuckling too. It's been a little hot. Um, it, it is relatively complicated, um, and also simple. Um, the act itself creates all sorts of preemptions, uh, that allow for certain levels of residential development in commercial, industrial, or mixed-use zones to the highest densities allowable under any of our land development regulations and to the highest heights under any of our land development regulations. So you can understand that could be relatively intense development. Um, we don't really have a whole lot of say-so in that. Um, we've looked at it inside and out. We've talked to neighboring jurisdictions. I know some of y'all have done your own research on this. Um, we don't, it's, it's called preemption, right? So we're a charter county, but we're subject to the general laws of the state of Florida. And when the Florida legislature says jump, we generally have to say how high. Doesn't matter if our land development regulations say otherwise. So we've struggled with that. I know we've worked with staff very closely, uh, who have also struggled with that. The only bit of relief the legislature gave us was about a year ago, they said, well, if you have a surplus of low-income housing, we're going to allow you to opt out of the tax exemption. Understand that before the opt-out was available, even though you were going to have this incredibly intense development that would undoubtedly, undoubtedly create a lot of demand on your law enforcement, on, on your code enforcement, on your animal control, and all the things we pay for, we were not allowed to increase taxes on that property by a penny for so long as they continue to operate it under Live Local. So they said, well, look, if you have a surplus, we'll let you opt out. You can opt out for two years at a time, and this is how you do it. So that's where we are today. We're, we're, we're sitting on the precipice of opting out. We have properly advertised it. Even though it's a resolution, it does have to sort of go through the same process that ordinance is required. That's why we're having a public hearing. Um, before we open the public hearing, Mr. Chair, I know it's a little unusual. I think it would be instructive if, if I read the resolution itself.
Please.
Okay. Resolution twenty twenty-five R dash zero four, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida pursuant to section one ninety-six point nineteen seventy-eight, sub-three, sub-O, Florida statutes, electing to not exempt certain property under section one ninety-six point nineteen seventy-eight, sub-three, sub-D one A, Florida statutes referred to as the Live Local Act Property Tax Exemption. Whereas section nineteen, uh, excuse me, one ninety-six point nineteen seventy-eight, sub-three, Florida statutes here and, here and after referred to as the Live Local Act Property Tax Exemption requires a county's property appraiser to exempt certain rental properties from ad valorem taxes if such properties meet the criteria of the Live Local Act Property Tax Exemption. And whereas section one ninety-six nineteen seventy-eight, sub-three, sub-D one A, Florida statutes provides an ad valorem tax exemption for qualified properties used to provide affordable housing to how, to house natural persons or families whose annual household income is between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent of the median annual adjusted gross income for households within the county in which the person or family resides, uh, AKA the eighty to twenty ta, eighty to one-twenty tax exemption. And whereas, beginning with the twenty twenty-five tax rule, the taxing authority is authorized to opt out of providing the eighty to twenty-one, eighty to one-twenty tax exemption if certain conditions are met. And whereas section one ninety-six nineteen seventy-eight, sub-three, sub-O, Florida statutes allows the taxing authority to opt out of providing the eighty to one-twenty tax exemption if it finds that the latest Schimberg Center for Housing Studies Annual Report prepared pursuant to Florida statute section four twenty point six oh seven, seven, six oh seven five, uh, AKA the Schimberg Annual Report, identifies that the number of affordable and available units in the county is greater than the number of renter households in the county for natural persons or families who meet the income criteria for the eighty to one-twenty tax exemption. And whereas the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners hereby finds that the latest Schimberg Annual Report, which is incorporated herein by reference, identifies a surplus of affordable and available units in the northeast non-metropolitan area plus Gilchrist and Levy in which Columbia County is located, for those households that meet the income criteria for the eighty to one-twenty tax exemption. And in accord, whereas in accordance with section one ninety-six point nineteen seventy-eight, sub-three, sub-O, Florida statutes, the Florida county, the Columbia County Board of County Commissioners hereby finds that Columbia County is a taxing authority that is eligible to adopt a resolution to not exempt properties that would otherwise qualify for the eighty to one-twenty tax exemption. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida as follows. Section one, the above recitals are, the above recitals are true and correct or are incorporated herein by this reference. Section two, the board finds that based on the Schimberg Annual Report, Columbia County is within an area where the number of affordable and available units in the designated area is three hundred and seven, greater than the number of renter households in the area for the category entitled zero to one hundred and twenty percent AMI or area median income. Section three, pursuant to section one ninety-six point nineteen seventy-eight, sub-three, sub-O, Florida statutes, Columbia County hereby elects not to exempt certain properties eligible for the eighty to one-twenty tax exemption otherwise allowed for under section one ninety-six point nineteen seventy-eight, sub-three, sub-D one A, Florida statutes, and directs the Columbia County Property Appraiser not grant any such exemptions. Section four, this resolution applies to the ad valorem property tax levies imposed within Columbia County. Section five, this resolution shall take effect on January one, two thousand twenty-six and shall expire on January one, two thousand twenty-eight. The resolution may be renewed prior to, to its expiration date in accordance with Florida law. Section six, this resolution has been duly advertised in accordance with section fifty point zero one one, sub-one, Florida statutes. A copy of this resolution shall be provided to the Columbia County Property Appraiser prior to January one, two thousand twenty-six. Section seven, although there does not appear to be any such taxpayer or property owner in Columbia County at the time hereof, this resolution does not impact a property owner of a multifamily project who was granted an exemption pursuant to section one ninety-six point one, that should be nineteen seventy-eight, point one nine seven eight, uh, three, sub-three, sub-D one A, Florida statutes. Prior to the adoption of this resolution, such property owner may continue to receive the exemption for each consecutive year the property owner applies for and has granted the exemption. Section eight, relating to severability, any, if any provision of this resolution or application thereof to any person or circumstances is held invalid, the invalidity shall not affect other provisions or applications of this resolution, which can be given effect without the invalid provision or, or application. And to this end, the provisions of this resolution are declared severable. Done and adopted, uh, if you do, uh, the twentieth day of February, two thousand twenty-five. So the important points there, you're opting out. The first tax year that's, that the exemption would have been available would have been the two thousand twenty-six tax year. So this will carry you through twenty-six all the way to January one twenty-eight. You have to have the saving provision in there pursuant to statute, but I wanted to make it clear there are no Live Local tax exemptions on the books right now. So even though we have to have the saving clause into the statute, it's only there to satisfy the statute. You will not have any of these.
And it's for two years.
It covers two years. The statute allows for two years, no, no longer than two years. Um, the other thing about the exemption, understand, is if somebody did file for and receive the exemption, they could actually qualify for it for up to thirty years, which is crazy, but they would also have to come in and renew. Um, so we'll have to renew if we want to keep the exemption. Anybody who wants to receive it, uh, should we allow the exemption to fall away, has to apply for it annually. If I'd ask to open the public hearing on the resolution.
And, uh, before we get into board comments, because I'm sure we got, uh, several here, uh, I'd like to open up the public hearing regards to resolution number twenty twenty-five R dash zero four. I know that y'all just heard a lot and, uh, we'll do our best to explain it. But anybody here to speak for or against or questions, go ahead. Just give your name to the clerk, Dylan, if you would.
Thank you, Chair and Board. My name is Dylan Adams. So it's great to see that the county is taking a position on directing and guiding strategy for the development. I think we need to continue to work with our LDRs to continue to focus on strategic development in places where housing is best suited. There's places for all types of housing. Uh, the project that we're presenting to the county over the next few months, and we're here for a different reason tonight, is for a market rate project, which is non-subsidized, state or federal. And the rebate that we're applying for is through the county with an agreement through the county. Um, I like to see the counties, and in smaller municipalities especially, being able to drive the car and determine where they're going to go with their future. Um, when you have folks from state, federal legislature, uh, directing and guiding, they don't live here. Um, they don't know what small turns and roads and impacts the traffic have when they start stacking housing in specific areas. Um, when you, when you do projects that involve people's lives, whether it's workforce, whether it's where they live, where they play, where they eat, where they travel, you have to take into account all those things. There are things that even account for called a walk score. Walk score determines all the amenities that are in an available area that they could physically walk to outside of their front door. Those things come into play with developments like a mixed-use development that would need to be placed in a strategic area that would amend to that. Um, it's great to see that the county's taking the first steps, um, and kind of, kind of taking the reins of it. Um, so I'd like to see that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan.
Jeff?
Good morning, gentlemen of the board, evening. Uh, I want to point out.
Jeff, give your name to the clerk, please.
Jeffrey Hill.
Only person you don't know.
Jeffrey Hill. I live on southeast side of Lake City. Before you vote on a resolution, I'd like to point out, your lawyer didn't get the numbers right. The numbers of Florida statutes are very important. He said something like Florida statute one, then he said should be nineteen seventy-eight or something like that. Before you vote on a resolution, you might want to get your numbers right. So our county doesn't appear ignorant of Florida statute numbers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Barbara Lindley. My question is, can someone, group, corporation come in and challenge the state appeal and say, hey, these numbers are wrong? What happens then if someone challenges this?
Which, which numbers are wrong?
Well, the housing numbers as far as, um, you have a surplus of.
The surplus numbers.
Okay.
The surplus numbers.
It's a good question. So the legislature actually said whatever the Schimberger, Schimberg study says is the law, right? So you have to wait, and that's why I attached, if you saw the agenda packet, that whole fifty-page annual reports in there, because the legislature has kind of ordained, whatever that center says is the truth.
Okay.
So they could challenge it, but they'd actually have to challenge the Live Local Act itself. They wouldn't be able to challenge what we're doing because we're following the statute.
Okay, but if this, if the county did not opt out, the county would be responsible for tons of stuff with no money involved.
That's exactly right.
So this is a good thing to opt out.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Board?
Is it time for us to talk about this?
Yes.
I kind of put it in layman's terms. The reason I want to talk about this is because it's, they're trying, it, it, I think the only commissioner here that has a potential spot that may be affected by this at this point. Now, isn't yet. I don't think it's, it's in the works, but I don't think it's been done yet, but I, I want to liken this to something so I can understand it even as good as y'all can. You know, when you were a kid and everybody played with a puzzle? And you would get your puzzle and you'd get your green places over there. there, the sky over here and the water over here, and you get it all straightened out? And then you had, you started making your puzzle and you got halfway through it and then your little brother came in there and knocked it all around just to be mean to you? Well, that's what the state's done to us with our planning, with the planning of our county. In other words, a lot of times, we, we sometimes seem we don't know what we're doing, but we are trying to plan for this county, for our industrial, for our, for our, um, commercial, for all of our different zonings. We know where we can handle certain businesses and certain, uh, housing. You know, we're, we're trying to make it where, you know, we got our industrial in the north and east side of town, so I'm on the south. We're trying to keep all this stuff in a, in a way that we're not just mixed up with, you know, we got an industrial center here and a, and a restaurant right beside it. You know, we're trying to keep it in a way that is a planned and, and smart way to do it so that traffic flows, so that everything does. A, a, a good example is back when they wanted to put the truck stop just down from the hospital. It wasn't good for us. It wasn't the spot for it, in my opinion, and, and in the people's opinion, which is really all that matters. Um, and, and roads are our biggest, I believe, concern about all of this. So planning for our county in many ways because of this bill is, is, is a thing of the past because you have so much commercial property and so much, you know, um, industrial property, you really don't know what's going to those places. It may not be a business. It may be a huge, you know, high-rise apartment complex. There's an hotel and, uh, it's kind of hard to prepare for this stuff. And, and if we don't have a voice, the county commissioners, which they have stated in this, that the commission has really no, no say-so other than what we're doing here. We've done everything we can really right now. We've done about all we can. So when the commissioner doesn't have a voice, that runs down to the folks, you know? We are here to represent you in things like this, to make sure your roads aren't backed up, to make sure we can do everything we can, and you know, we do the best we can. So it really comes down to not only us having a voice, but the most important person is the neighborhoods and the people that live in this community don't have a voice because we don't have one because the state's decided to decide these, make these decisions for us. So I, I, I will tell you right now that where they, and I'll stay, I'll say where it's at. You know where, I don't know, and then when I say this, I don't know if you could pick a worse spot for what they're wanting to do. And I'm not mad at the developer. I'm not even mad at the people that are trying to buy the property and trying to do this, but I am a little perturbed with the state because they don't live here, like the young man said, they don't live here and they don't really know where our challenges are. Well, when I tell you where this is, I think you're all going to agree unless you have a place you can tell me is worse, right in front of the hospital on the road to the country club neighborhood. Now, if there's a worse place, you let me know, but to me, if you, if you put, put that much traffic in that area and we got a hospital there that's already hard to get into, hard to get out of, we've made this same speech with the truck stop, and I just don't see that as a place that can handle this. And it's in my district.
Or the roads.
And the road can't handle it. When I say place, I mean our infrastructure that you pay for as a community can't handle this. It, it, it's, it's not about providing housing. It's about providing housing where we can't get them out of there to get to the road to go to work, and we surely can't get ambulances in there. We can't get nurses in there. I mean, if, if you worked at the hospital, you'd know what I mean. And if you're there at five o'clock, you'll see when you look at that red light. So it, it's just, it's a dead end road into a subdivision. It's a hospital right across from it. It already has just a two-lane split road right there, and it's just not the place. And that's why the state shouldn't preempt, which is just a good word for put us out of business, because they've become your county commissioner of the state. They've decided that we know better than you do. So if you talk to anybody, if you talk to a state representative or, or the governor's office, or anybody that has any, any power in this situation, or senator, or whoever you call and you talk to, because I'm sure there will be people, please tell them to come look at it. And if they can look at that and say, that's a good idea, then okay, but I don't think anybody would say that. So it's one of those things, I, I'm going a little long and I'm sorry I'm taking up these guys, but they're not, they don't have really a place that's getting this, but they're all going to have it. It's coming. So folks, I, I'm ADD and I want to take care of this. I don't want this going in there, but I have nothing I can do about it. There is nothing I can do about it. The governor and the state government have decided that we don't make decisions about our community anymore when it comes to this. So I want to tell you that I'm sorry on behalf of me because it, it just upsets me that they can do this, but they can. And I, I think it'll get worse. I think it'll get worse as we go on in years. So I appreciate you listening to me and I'll shut up now and listen to other commissioners.
Ms. Ford?
Well, I'll just say, it seems like slowly every year they're, they're taking our authority and putting it in Tallahassee. The, the local authorities just are every year losing more and more of the decision what happens in their counties. And they're, and, and that, like Robbie said, that takes away y'all's authority too, because we listen to what people want a lot of time. It just seems like every year they're coming up with more and more from Tallahassee to, uh, to take, to take it out of the locals, local authorities' hands. I, I'd say we just got to raise enough cane about it, try to get it stopped. But Robbie's right right now with this. They can do it if they want to. We don't have any say in them.
But, uh, as we go forward with this situation, of course, we've taken the first step today. And, uh, you know, when you read this, uh, live local, there's a lot of, uh, confusion, I guess is the word. I don't know if that's a proper word, but we, we, we're going to throw up every blockade that we can that in regards to our community. Cause what Robbie just said is exactly, every single district in Columbia County, I'll assure you, there's a bad spot in there. But this is one of the most horrendous spots due to the fact, I mean, me, five o'clock the other day, it was like, it was, it was off chain. It, it, I purposely went out there for that, uh, to look at Dale Peeler's job and, but it was like, it, but we're, we're, I, I'm committed as a, one of the five, uh, board members, everything I can do to stop that, slow it down or whatever, you know, within the bounds of the law, we're going to do such. Uh, but one thing I'd like to stress, myself and Stas had this conversation, and, uh, anybody that's been around for any time whatsoever, uh, myself and Mr. Ford, we spent, we were invited several times to Tallahassee last year to fight the, uh, term limit issue. It's back again. And, uh, but what Rocky just said a minute ago, he hit the nail on the head. It, it seemed as though that, I mean, we were sitting in that crowd there and we were fighting against our own people, basically what we were doing, Rocky, you know, and, 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 uh, this preemptive, it's, it's, uh, it seems as though that is, I can assure you when Robbie's daddy was sitting over there in the Senate, government wasn't done quite this way. You, you never heard of preemptives at that time. You know, they, they got on there hollering, threw stuff across the hall and, uh, they, they made law. But, uh, it's, it's a little bit different show and, uh, it's what we're living with today, but you know, our voice is all we got. So we got a, I don't want to lose home rule. And, uh, I think it's our responsibility to do our research and continue down this road and put up as many blockades as we can because, you know, we govern our county. We don't want Tallahassee governing us every time.
Can I say one thing just for information? For the people that live in the country club subdivision, if you look on your Facebook page, there's numbers of people you can call to give your opinion of this and, and, you know, tell them what you think about it. So some people have posted on that. I made sure it was on your Facebook page. Okay?
And, and I'll say this, a lot of this stuff is brought forward by representatives from large counties like Dade County, Palm Beach County.
Yeah.
And they don't realize how much that affects smaller counties. And, and I know, you said, I know Columbia County is getting bigger, but we're still considered a small county in Florida. But there's a lot of counties smaller than us that this is going to affect farwards. And, and nobody takes into consideration, I mean, Lafayette County, can you imagine Lafayette County trying to build a road, having to pay for it, uh, to accommodate something like this in their county? I mean, there's just no way they can fund it. So.
And Rocky, I'd say, look at McClany.
Yeah.
Yeah, their bedroom community for Jacksonville.
Yeah.
I called the board over and I said, y'all better get on top of this because they're thirty minutes from Jacksonville, twenty minutes from Orange Park. They're going to get hammered.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because their, their property's cheaper than ours.
Already look at what they're doing, Robbie. And, you know, in the mornings, I mean, they pour out of there like they're going to Buc-Ee's or something or other, you know?
Yep.
So we're trying to get ahead of it. We're trying to do what we can. This is one of the first steps to opt out and, uh.
We'll stay on top of it.
Yeah, but I can tell you the people's voice with these people in Tallahassee matters way more than ours, because they're just going to see us as being political. When you guys call the voters, that's when they listen. They're not going to listen to us.
Yep. Ms. Parnell, you have anything?
It's going to be a community effort. I mean, we need everybody to, to speak up on this. I believe live local act is, it would destroy our rural community here, and that's something I don't think anybody on the board wants to see is our rural community not be rural anymore. Uh, we want to grow, but this is, this is beyond that. This is, this is perfect for the metropolitan area, probably Orlando, Dade County, Columbia County and surrounding counties. It's not for us, in my opinion anyways. Um, that's what I have. So we need you guys to really speak out and do what needs to be done so we can stay, remain a rural county.
One more thing. I could talk about this for days. It's not going to be a two-story thing, y'all. This is going to be as high as motels.
Yeah.
Hotels. Okay. It's not, this ain't, this is what you've never seen before in Columbia County. This isn't going to be a one-story apartment building or a two-story. It's going to be large. Yeah. It, it's not going to be, it's not going to be what we're used to seeing. So I appreciate it. I'm going to shut up.
Well, I know our representatives is going to speak for us in the state. So I think that maybe one day we'll get this thing hemmed up and try to help the situation, what we've got going on here, somebody trying to tell us what we can do and can't do for you people. So we just have to do what we can do and hopefully, hopefully it'll work out.
Well, with that being said, uh, Mr. Hollinsworth, I think it's just proper that.
Yeah.
We ought, yeah, Mr. Hollinsworth ought to entertain this motion.
Uh, I move that we pass resolution number two thousand twenty-five R O four to opt out of the live local act tax exemptions. So. I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, and to reassure the board, um, your county staff is also working very hard, uh, with our folks in Tallahassee to, to hopefully fix this once and for all.
This is a very, I commend everybody in part because everybody's heads been spinning on this, doing a great job. We appreciate it.
Yeah, I agree. Like mine's literally spinning like the Exorcist or something. Um, okay. So, uh, Ms. Chair, the next item that I have for public hearing is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash O four amending the county's land development regulations relating to campgrounds and RV parks. The board will recall that several months ago, you, uh, passed a moratorium and said, hey, no more campgrounds till we can kind of get a handle on what we're doing. You are still under that moratorium. Uh, we have, uh, prepared and presented to the, uh, to your planning and zoning staff and then to your planning and zoning board as the local, uh, planning agency, a draft, uh, ordinance, uh, that would amend the land development regulations, um, to basically go from that single standard that you used to have, which was twelve hundred foot campsites to a whole list of standards, um, fairly comprehensive and, uh, to put it plainly, fairly restrictive. Uh, so what we've done is tightened up our definitions pretty significantly to talk about what a site is within a campground, um, to identify what the different kinds of accommodations are, uh, versus, you know, movable accommodations versus immovable accommodations. Uh, the first very significant change is that anywhere an RV, trailer, portable tiny home or vehicular accommodation might be located, that needs to be a forty-five hundred square foot campsite. Um, the reason for that is you don't want, or at least under this theory, is we didn't want them stacked on each other like they are now. A twelve hundred foot campsite, twelve foot wide, hundred foot deep, some variation of that. This is forty-five foot wide and a hundred foot deep. So it allows, it requires more spacing. So you don't have quite the high level of density. Um, that's a significant change. All other campsites that don't use vehicle, vehicular accommodation can still be twelve hundred. We, uh, uh, received recommendation that the RV setback line, I, the closest an RV can be parked to the nearest boundary would go from twenty-five feet to fifty feet. Uh, campgrounds and RV parks, this is a big change, would be not less than twenty contiguous and reasonably compact acres. So instead of these RV parks being put on five acre parcels, seven acre parcels, ten acre parcels, you're going to need a full twenty. Uh, and it needs to be a reasonably compact twenty, which means you wouldn't have some gerrymandered lot, uh, that would really be disjointed. Um, fifty-foot natural buffer, this is something that's, you found in other parts of our LDRs and we brought in the, uh, exception procedures under four point two point one three, uh, so that if you couldn't do a fifty-foot natural buffer for some reason, there's a process for you to come in and ask for variance on that. Um, another very significant change, anywhere there is a platted subdivision that has lots of elite, uh, excuse me, of five acres or less, so parcels, five acres or less, they cannot adjoin that subdivision. Okay? So that's not a requirement now. It's a new requirement. Uh, so you'd have to find a twenty that was not directly next door to a five acre or less subdivision, and that would be a platted subdivision. So your unrecorded subdivisions don't qualify. This is just the ones we have recorded. And then the final very significant one, and I know this one will probably garner some discussion, um, would require that there be centralized water and there'd be centralized wastewater sewer. So you either would have to have a package plant that would service all of the RV sites, or you'd have to be hooked up to public sewer, okay, or pu- pu- public, uh, utility. You wouldn't be allowed to have septic tanks under this arrangement. And the same thing would go for your water. You'd need either a centralized well with your own treatment, or you would need to be hooked up to, uh, public utility for water provision. So the idea of that was it would, um, gravitate these sites more to our interstate exchanges where they're more likely to have access to those kind of utilities. And if somebody really did want to be out in the rural part of the county, they would have to invest the necessary money to make sure they have the right kind of infrastructure. Uh, so those are the, again, those are very significant changes. You went from a twelve hundred foot campsite requirement all the way up to the list I just read to you. Uh, we are, uh, set for public hearing. Uh, we did have our public hearing with the, uh, planning and zoning board. So this is ready for adoption, uh, as is the pleasure of the board after you have a public hearing.
Okay, one question I would have before I open up the public hearing, Joel. Can we opt, because some of the research that I did, you know, I, I do have some questions and input relevant, and you know, we, I probably dropped the ball on that prior to leading up to this. I know you've been working very vividly on this, but can we, if we still have the public hearing, can we go back and have a workshop to amend some of this?
So you have several options. The planning and zoning board tenders a recommendation. They're an advisory board to you on this issue. You just have to go through the process to say that you got their advice. We've done that, okay? Um, we set this for adoption now because remember back in January, I said, I'm going to do it on the twentieth, and we all agreed we would do that. We even had a special meeting to make sure we got it taken care of with the planning and zoning board. Um, this is your ball to carry now. So you can choose to be less restrictive, more restrictive through an amendment. You know, if you wanted to move to, to have it adopted as amended, you could do that. I, I do recall, I talked to Commissioner Ford before the meeting. Um, I did not remember it before he shared it with me, but you know, there was a discussion of having a workshop and we did not do that. So if there's a need for a workshop, again, I put it in the memo and I was restating it to make it very clear to the public, big significant changes. This is not just a thing where we change the size of a lot, we maybe change the setback. These are very significant changes and I feel comfortable saying it'd be not impossible, but it, it changes the dynamic of RV parks in Columbia County entirely.
No doubt.
It makes it so costly and so difficult that you will go from having as many as we've had these last few years to probably having almost none because this changes the, the economics of it. So what you can do procedurally, um, you could at this time, uh, move to table this to a date certain, because it's been noticed. You don't want to be more than, I think you don't want more than thirty days out. So you'd want to set this for the net, for the meeting, the second meeting in March. We could have a workshop between now and then very easily. Workshops can be done at the morning meeting. So we could do that at the morning meeting in March and then in the evening meeting, bring this back up. You can also, if you open the public hearing, you would just need to continue the hearing, okay? You can also, if you open the public hearing, you would just need to continue the hearing, okay? So that we would reopen the public hearing in March, uh, and allow for additional public comment. My recommendation, if you think there's gonna be changes, if you think there's gonna be things that are come out of that workshop, let's go ahead and have a motion to table for a date certain before you have the public hearing, and then we'll have the public hearing on that date and handle everything at that time. So happy to do whatever the pleasure of the board is.
So I I'll make a motion that we table it tonight and set a public hearing for the second meeting in March.
Okay.
And have a workshop in the morning of the first meeting in March.
First meeting.
What we can do, uh, Mr. Chair, we'll we'll cross notice that public hearing, or excuse me, we'll cross notice the workshop with the regular meeting. And so we can either, depending on what the pleasure of the chair is, we can do it at the beginning of the meeting, or probably just at the conclusion of business. Depends on if you think there's gonna be a lot of public interest in it, you want to schedule that it, uh, we'll do a time certain scheduling. Uh, we'll talk about that. Um, where if you, when you guys have seen other boards do time certain scheduling, where you'll have your meeting going.
And then start.
Up to ten AM and you'll be like, okay, we need to adjourn. We have a time certain. So we'll we'll work that out.
Yeah.
And 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 really, I don't think it's gonna be a long workshop. There's just, I, and I agree, there needed to be some changes to this. But I think in some areas, we may have went a little overboard. Um, and I'd like, I'd like to have a workshop where we can discuss some of those items and.
Well, we are all set and positioned to do that.
The, uh, well, I, uh, okay, well.
You have the motion.
Robbie, you got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Great.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And we'll get that reset.
Okay.
Uh, let's see.
Number twelve?
I have another one. You don't get to get rid of me that fast. Oh, yeah. And then I go first on discussion. Okay. All right. So this next one, please don't table this. You'll give Troy a corner. It's been continued to the second meeting in March. Yeah, there's the the public hearing got pushed out of that. And then they also set a workshop for the first meeting in March, which will be the first Thursday of March. I just saw my calendar in front of me. That's when they'll have an actual workshop where they'll have an open discussion. It's at nine, nine thirty, right? Nine thirty in the morning. Okay? And you can also reach out to your commissioners. Okay?
What district are you in, sir? Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Make sure you get the information, okay?
Okay. So so March sixth for the workshop and March twentieth for the public hearing. Okay?
You're welcome at both.
Yeah, please.
Absolutely. Yes, definitely.
Um.
Be here.
Yes, sir.
Yes. So the next item that I have for public hearing is, uh, Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Five Zero Five, Amending the County's Building Code Ordinance and Land Development Regulations for National Flood Insurance Program Requirements. You guys will recall that I brought this up a couple of meetings ago when I let you know I was gonna have this hearing tonight. Periodically, our offices reviewed and our land development regulations are reviewed for compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program uh, guidelines. Uh, we have an audit. We have outside advisors that come in. They look at what we have on the books. And then they sort of walk us through the changes we need to make to make sure we stay in the good graces of the NFIP. Um, the significantly amended LDRs that are included in, uh, Twenty Twenty-Five dash O Five. All those changes came from those consultants, and it is my strong recommendation that we take each of their recommendations because they are frankly far more knowledgeable and on NFIP than than I am. And I won't speak for our staff, but I think they would probably agree that we should take the recommendations. Um, there is one change that was implemented, uh, uh, after consulting with our building official, Mr. Cruz. And that is the change in our permit threshold. Um, most of you are aware that if a project is less than four thousand dollars, we don't require a building permit. It's a a form of exemption. The Florida Building Code now has that at five thousand dollars. So we have included that change in this ordinance, uh, which is outside the NFM, uh, NFIP, um, uh, suggestions. But we're doing that to make ourselves more consistent with Florida Building Code. And so with that, I'd ask to open the public hearing.
Okay, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for Ordinance Twenty Twenty-Five dash Zero Five. Anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing none. The clear public hearing closed. What's the wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion. We approve, uh, resolution. What is it? Twenty Twenty-Five?
O five.
O five.
You got a motion?
I got Twenty Twenty Five. Twenty Twenty-Five dash O Five, amending county's building code.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Motion to adopt.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Up again, Joel.
Yes, sir. Um, recently, uh, Commissioner Ford was there. Uh, Mr. Kraus has been to some of the meetings, and I've been attending the Lake Shore Hospital Authority meetings. Um, as you guys are probably aware from the newspaper, they've been working on, um, accounting for and distributing some of their real estate. Uh, we had some negotiations, some management meetings, uh, and at their most recent meeting, they agreed to donate um, some lands downtown to the county that that frankly we'd requested, uh, for relocation of, uh, support services uh, as well as future expansion. And so there's a map that I've included, uh, in your memo there. The items highlighted in pink, uh, are the properties that were voted for donation. One of those buildings or one of those properties does include the, uh, hospital authorities administrative building, uh, as well as the record storage building in the rear. And then you have some unimproved real property and some parking lots uh, that I believe most of y'all are familiar with. Um, when they made their motion, the hospital authority board, um, wanted to attach a few strings, uh, in insofar as they're donating land. They wanted to make sure they had certain conditions attached. The first one is one that we have typically done whenever we're accepting donation, and that is the county will carry all the transactional costs. So costs for preparing the deeds, cost of having any title insurance policies issued. Uh, and then the last issue that I'm gonna ask about later is to have a survey prepared of the lands to be donated. They don't want to incur costs if they're donating the land, uh, which again is fairly consistent. They would also like the board to guarantee the court administration will be located at the authority's current administration building at two fifty-nine Northeast Franklin Street. That's the building you're all familiar with where they hold their meetings. They would also like, uh, because court administration advised that they can't allow anybody else to co-locate with them in that building. Uh, the hospital authority board requested that we would make alternative office space available for their staff. Um, I think we might have some room in the hospital, in, excuse me, in the old Lake City Reporter Building. We may have some room downstairs when we move some people around. Uh, but that's a condition they would like to have on their donation is that we will house their people. Um, that would be at a nominal rent, sort of the same way we were renting the record storage building from them at a nominal rent. Uh, and then they want a thirty-year reverter clause that would revert the property back to the hospital authority or the authority's successor, should it no longer exist. Um, and again, a reverter clause on a donation between public agencies is very common. Uh, so what I'm requesting tonight is that the board would approve these conditions, uh, so that I can move forward with Mr. Kenan to get the contract finalized. Um, and then, uh, well, that's my first request.
I'll make a motion. We approve the terms for donation from Lake Shore Hospital Authority to Clemmie County.
Second.
And Joel, before I call for the vote, everything in pink is a property that's incurred in this conference.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's parking lot now. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Anybody else have any questions or anything? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right. And Mr. Chair, the second request I have under recommended motions, we would like to, as we're going through this process, have these properties um, thoroughly surveyed. So, uh, a lot of times when you have properties that's on city blocks, you just say, hey, it's that block. It's fine. We would like to have a comprehensive survey done to locate utilities, to locate easements, to locate, uh, encroachments, fences, everything. Uh, it won't be inexpensive, but I think it'll be very valuable, particularly if we do use this property for expansion in the future. We do have surveyors that we work with regularly. It's not a big deal to assign them, but I would like to have the board's authority to assign them, uh, if it pleases the board.
So moved. Same.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Get clear on that motion. Mr. Carter?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. First item we have is down in Fort White. Budget Amendment Twenty-Five Twenty-Six. So this is a reimbursement agreement for the construction, operation and maintenance between FDOT and Columbia County for the oversight of construction, CEI, sidewalk at Sky Avenue and Jordan Street. I'm requesting a motion to approve the reimbursement agreement for that, for the oversight destruction of the sidewalk at Southeast Sky and Jordan and adopt Resolution Two Zero Two Five R O Seven.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The next item is over to New Fire Station Admin Building on Lake Jeffrey Highway. This is simply a housekeeping item. Uh, the amendment to the grant is updated to include the contract for the design as well as engineering to the retention funds. It's just once again a housekeeping item. So I'm requesting a motion to approve Amendment Number One to Contract FM Eight Eight Three, Design and Expansion Station Fifty-One, Replace the Statement of Work and Add Additional Reinforcements.
So moved.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
In the final, in the final item, um, at our last meeting, we discussed not only in states of emergency, we promised a hurricane workshop, but I think we've all agreed we've moved into the era of modern technology. And, um, the need for a full-time public information officer is necessary. So HR teamed up with, uh, management. We got a good job description written up. We'd like to create this position. And we're advertising, assuming the board approves this tonight, as pay as negotiable. We want to really throw it out there to see what we have, get us a full-time person on board to help us navigate through these modern technologies.
And 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 I want to just say about this, I appreciate Kevin teaching us about Facebook and being very open to all the posts that we make during the storm. You know, Kevin, I'd have never done what I did and been as good at it if I'd have not known you.
Do you have a Facebook?
He thinks he's sent Robbie into retirement.
Do we have a question motion? I move that we approve the position and position description for a public information officer.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. I, uh, while Kevin's sitting down, I talked to David and Kevin the other day. And one of the unique things about that, I liked the way that they were going about coming up with a structure of pay. You know, coming from different departments that, you know, it's already allocated. I think that was a good idea, relevant to that, and we'll see how it works.
So, yeah, because this position will represent every department.
Mm-hmm.
They'll be funding for this position from the different funds that we have throughout the budget.
And no doubt, you'll be having a workshop explaining to department heads how this works.
Yes.
Okay.
And they will have to follow the policy that requires them to use PIO officer and not just, uh.
Okay. All right.
Great. Um, I only have a couple of items. Uh, the first one I requested I pulled from the agenda. Um, so the one I'm really talking about now is the request for a residential incentive for Project Ava Crest. The Economic Development Board recommended to you to adopt a ninety-five percent tax rebate for five years based on the capital investment of ten million dollars. They did the housing scorecard to come up with that for this project. Uh, project is a thirty duplex residential unit proposed on ten acre site off of State Road Forty-Seven. So, uh, the next thing I talked about was you'd need an economic development agreement. So in in saying this, you're adopting the incentive doesn't say boom, it's done. Before the incentive can become effective, you have to have an economic development agreement. And Joel could talk about that more if you want. Uh, that makes sure that we can work on all the tiny details involved in this type of thing. So really, if you do adopt this tonight, you're saying you're interested in the incentive, but go out and negotiate the agreement with the attorney. The reason I mention that is the way these things work, um, you will grant the incentive. The incentive will go ultimate would be transferable ultimately to whoever builds the development. Uh, because this is a residential development, because it has duplexes, properties can be sold after they're built. Those incentives would come back to the developer, not necessarily the person that paid the taxes. But having said that, additionally, it does, this does not exempt them from doing the MSBU that we require for the roadway, for the drainage, or any other LDR requirements that we would have. So that would all have to be included in the economic development agreement. The developers are here if you have any questions for them. But I just wanted to make sure you were aware of those particular details to be transparent.
Yeah, and Bart, I don't know if y'all remembered or not, but we 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 created this incentive two years ago.
Yep.
Two years ago. And this is the first project we've had that's come up with this incentive. It's a residential project. And this this incentive here that we created was just for residential projects. So, uh, you know, and this is the first one that's come come up since we created it, and, uh, and I think it's a real good project for this. Yeah, I I I'm enjoying the fact that it's where it should be. And it's it's what it should be. And and I appreciate that from the developers.
Okay, David, you just said something a minute ago. I just want to make sure we're clear on this. The incentive would go to the, you, one minute you said the builder, then you said the developer.
So ultimately.
Developer gonna be the builder?
At some point, and Joel may want it.
So the the easiest way to think about it, Mr. Chair, is whoever makes the fourteen million dollar capital investment
Okay.
is gonna end up with the incentive. Does that make, because that's what you're incentivizing, is that fourteen million dollar capital investment. So Hutton is an example. We negotiated with Hutton over there where Dix is and all that stuff. And they specifically negotiated into their contract that they wanted two things. One, they wanted it to be openly transferable because they were gonna create a subsidiary. They do all their little bunny management stuff on their developer side. The other thing it wanted was any incentives and rebates that came back, they wanted them. Because they were gonna build those huge facilities and build out all that and do all the infrastructure. They were gonna make the capital investment. So in the future, when the incentives came back, they wanted them, right? They didn't want Dix to get the incentive. They didn't want Bells or whoever, you know, whoever went in to get the incentive. They wanted it because they were the developer making the improvement. It's very easy for us to structure if we do an economic development agreement with the current owner, okay? Performance of the economic development agreement on the part of whoever the other person is, is the capital investment, is the capital improvement. We can have that be transferable so long as the one who it's transferred to is the one that makes capital improvement. What we can't do, and I've already spoken to one of the developers about this, you can't turn this thing on its head. So if you had a hundred percent of the land and a hundred percent of the incentive and a hundred percent of the capital investment, you can't turn around and portion that off and say, well, I'm gonna sell ten percent of this land and ten percent of the entitlement goes with it. No. We have a scorecard. The capital investment is fourteen million dollars. That's what we expect. You can't break it up. I'll use another example from years ago when Jesse Quillen was still here. Uh, the hospital was gonna put another floor on. Do you remember this?
Yes, I did. Very well.
And we have phase one and phase two. And we structured our incentive based on both of those phases. So we'll give you all these incentives, assuming you build out both phases. I think it was like the week before y'all were gonna approve it. They called up and said, we want to just put phase two on the shelf, and we just want to approve it with phase one. And we told them, no. We negotiated for the full development. We'll give you the incentives when we get the full development. So it's that quid pro quo. We can absolutely structure the agreement to make sure that the county gets what it bargains for. And I do think the developers fully understand that, that, you know, if they get this incentive, it's conditioned upon that level of capital investment that they promised.
So. And it's very common in residential development, where the person that comes to you with the applicant sells it to a builder to build up, build out the facility.
They're they're deserving an entitlement.
So what we're really doing is we're making sure that the incentive goes to the man that brought the money, that that is investing in our county. So that way it doesn't get mixed up in the score. It's like you said, Dix didn't come and invest all that money. They just came in and
So what you're doing.
Rent the place or whatever they did.
If you approve an economic development agreement with the owner of the property, the property then becomes entitled, right? This property is entitled to certain tax exemptions. That becomes part of the sale price when they sell to whoever comes in to actually build on the property.
But the incentive would go to the actual builder.
The incentive will go to whoever makes the capital investment.
Whoever spends the fourteen million.
And then, uh. And then, uh, the developers, Tim, and, uh, they'll, they'll be, they'll bring forth a site plan and everything at a later date.
They have already done.
Development regulations.
It's all in there, yeah, it's all in this book.
We're actually talking about splitting the property right now, too, aren't we? So that's a different story. Yeah.
So, Tim, what we're talking about here is we're talking about 60 doors, 30 duplexes, right? Our deficit in housing, and during the presentation to the EADB earlier, um, we had zero on the market for new resale, right? Somebody's constructed new duplexes or multifamily to sell it. Gator Woods changed hands like 100 times, right? People were rolling 1955 single units. Um, I got a gentleman that purchased all of Ed Higgs's stuff out of New Jersey, he just called me to try to get out all five of those properties again. Uh, we're gonna do that and try to rehab those and make them non-subsidized as well in the future. Um, so we have a lot of opportunity here. The plan is, is to be able to sell that, sell these units out, have it fully developed, have it be a 14, 14 approximately million dollar capital investment. They'll recoup those funds based on that tax rebate. County will get 5%, right, of the taxes, not counting fire assessment, schools, all those things that'll still get paid. At the end of that five years, you will get all 100% in perpetuity, like they say in Shark Tank, forever, okay? These are market rate projects, non-subsidized, no government, no federal, no state funding. Um, the engineering, I know we had a couple concerns, we'll take a look there, that has been well addressed, Mr. Murphy. Site plan, site plan was delivered during future land use change and zoning change, and you'll have, uh, we'll be, we'll be moving forward with the progression to seek full entitlement fairly soon here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I can tell, I can tell you that this project will bring housing in a very small strip of land, but it'll bring workforce housing. And affordable housing has a misnomer, right? Kind of a dirty word around it, because it's like, hey, the pizza man won't go there after 5 o'clock, and the Comcast guy won't show up, he's gonna get robbed or whatever. This is gonna provide housing for schoolteachers and a guy that works at DOC to raise their kids on 47, that's right, not, not right on top of a new Toyota dealership or a two lane road behind a hospital. Um, so we intend, we intend to see this project through, um, and I've discussed, I've discussed with several other property owners, because my, you know, we represent a local LLC, we do entitlement work and strategic initiatives for landowners as owners' representatives. This is a local landowner, and we, we expect this to be a project that we replicate on the west side, south end of the county, something on the north as well. Um, if we do it four times, that's 240 places to live, it didn't need any government subsidy, you guys drive the car, and you know where it's going.
Now, as far as the incentive program, you know, I was on board when Tim worked too hard at it.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I'm assured that the complex is gonna look good.
Yes.
You know, there, I'm not, I'm not worried about that, and I support the incentive program, you know, we put a lot of work into that thing, and, uh, we were tarred and feathered at one time, I believe, Tim, wasn't it?
I recall, yes, sir.
He can't, he, he couldn't come to a meeting without saying Hungstead, so I finally had to tell him, don't talk about Hungstead. But, uh, but no, I, I get it, I would just be, I think this could be a, uh, an earmark project, and, uh, we'll just look forward to, but as Mr. Hollinsworth said, I think it's in perfect place, just make sure, don't flood, we're good.
Yes, sir. Will do.
I move to approve the tax rebate of 95% for five years for Project Ava Crest and direct county attorney draft and economic development.
Mr. Chair? You got a comment there?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, you got a comment.
And plus, uh, I gotta close the public hearing, too. Yeah, thank you. Uh, Ms. Lenley?
There's a definite need for housing, and what I wondered, wanted to know is what is the anticipated rent? The other question, if it's a duplex community, will they all have individual trashcans or will they be a master dumpster? And I know where the property is, will there be, um, city water and city sewer at that location?
I'm gonna let the developer, Barbara, if you, if that's all the questions you have, and maybe he can get them all at one time.
Okay.
Pleasure to address the board tonight. Um, my name's Tim Williams, I'm with Haymark Group, we represent the owner of the site. Um, so it, it, we do have a letter in the package that we provided you guys, and it was presented to the EDAB and, uh, the zoning board, uh, that we do have access and availability for city water at the site. Unfortunately, we don't have city sewer, but we do have, uh, recently provided a septic study that shows septic viability at a, quite a high cost, I might add. Um, but yeah, so all of that, uh, is, is already thought through, already done as part of our due diligence process and included in your package, except for the septic study. I believe the other question is, what was the rent gonna be? It's a market rate project, uh, these units, we're not completely sure will be either for rent or for sale, probably a mixture of both. And I think, uh, Mr. Murphy, Commissioner Murphy, Chairman Murphy, addressed, uh, potentially even selling some lots for, for, that may not be developed. So I think it's important to note, on the scorecard, the cutoff is $10 million. So while the full build out of the site is more in the $14 million range, uh, we wanna make sure that we're in our agreement, uh, and I'm telling you now because, and you'll see the agreement when it comes back, uh, we'll probably, you know, as long as we qualify for that $10 million, we want the full rebate, uh, and that would allow us to do, dispose of some of the other sites, uh, not for development, and we'll still meet the, meet that $10 million threshold.
Yeah.
Uh, so this is the most flexible option, uh, this is the kind of thing that allows us to catalyze growth and development here, the right kind, like you talked about, and according to the existing LDRs. Did I address all the questions, Ms. Lenley?
Oh.
Oh, trashcans, uh, yes. As far as I know, it's gonna be in the city's, um, and the county's collection area and have trashcan.
Um, you said that someone'd be available for sale, so there's 30 duplex units, and someone says, I'm gonna buy that one and that one. Would the developers sell those completed units?
Oh, sure. We sell to investors all the time in a project like this, and there are investors who like to buy finished new duplexes for, for, for rent. And it's 60, 30 duplexes, but they're actually 60 doors.
Right, 60 doors. And so if you sell them, the people that buy them are responsible for the taxes on that unit.
Yes.
How does that work? Why would it go back to you if, say, I bought these two right here?
I'll flesh that out, because that's a frequently asked question in situations like this. In our package, we've, and in our, because of our extensive due diligence process, we've identified financial hurdles that are challenging and, and impossible to overcome. Uh, this site has 23 gopher tortoises. So those gopher tortoises cost $6,000 apiece to, uh, just for the, uh, recipient's site fee, not much, not, not to mention the cost of actually bringing the backhoe out, digging them up, uh, conveying them, you know, so we've estimated that to be as much as $180,000. We're doing a parklet, which is an improved portion of the property that's available and accessible to both the public and our residents, uh, that's a substantial cost. Uh, the other cost is, uh, changes to the intersection on, uh, State Road 47. So when you add all that up, you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars. Carbon gutters, you know, to meet the LDRs that we currently have, there are some, some substantial costs associated with that, which we're happy to do it because we think it makes a better project. It just makes it impossible to do from a financial perspective. No one would do this pro, type of project on this type of spot without the incentive. So as, uh, I think the board discussed earlier, when our owner sells the site either for the development of the entire parcel or the development and construction of the units, which could be one person that does both, could be two separate people, they will endeavor and have to spend all of the money to, to make those improvements. So they're the ones that face the financial hardship and the risk involved in doing that. So they're the people who get the rebate.
But once it's sold, and I bought this one, you know, I bought the one where Parnell was, and I bought the one where Ford was, I bought those two duplexes.
Right.
And then I own them, and then I'm responsible for the taxes.
Yes, but your taxes don't, are no higher and no less than they would normally be for that. And I'll let Joel take it.
Tim, if I may, real quick, that, Barbara, uh...
I do have a question, will there be sidewalks in front of the duplexes?
Everything amounts to LDRs, but to answer your question there, it's no more different than, like Joel said, of the Dix project, you'll pay your tax if you invest in that, but the developer gets the rebate at the end, okay? They have nothing to do, you'll pay, you'll pay right to Kyle, then Kyle'll stroke the check. If, back two years ago, two and a half years ago, when we come up with this incentive program through economic development, that was all vetted out at that point. This is no more different, other than this is for residential, but as we did on the Dix project.
I, I think, in this, I appreciate the question, I think I, remember, the county's paying this money as an incentive, is the easiest way to think of it? The county's incentivizing the build out. The county's not incentivizing home ownership.
Right.
So even though you own the home and you're paying your full tax bill, we're paying the incentive to the person who actually constructed that building there to make that possible. Because without the incentives, as Mr. Williams indicated, and we've heard this from other developers, not just Mr. Williams, the barriers to doing a large-scale development in Columbia County are, are higher than they are in other counties because of access to utilities, because of infrastructure, because of things that they have to do that other jurisdictions do, we just don't do them. So what, instead of doing them, we incentivize, and it's kind of a way for us to thread the needle, and even though we've had this for, I think it's been even longer than two years we've had it.
It's probably been.
We've never done one.
That's right.
This is the first one we've ever actually had.
He mentioned something about a parklet, would they be a park area? I didn't understand what he stated.
That, that kind of stuff generally happens in the site development process with land development? I think they do have a site plan, though. Is it in this packet, guys?
Barbara, you can have this, I got two of them.
Ms. Lenley, go through these, they've done a pretty good job.
That's the question you got.
Oh, yeah, it actually shows the layout and everything.
Okay.
So basically, to, to simplify what you're asking, if you bought it, you would pay your taxes.
Just like any...
Just like everybody else.
Yeah.
Then they would apply for their rebate, and that rebate would go to the developer, not to the owner.
So we're not abating the taxes, we're refunding.
We're refunding.
And it plainly states, they don't get the rebate unless they apply for the rebate.
And does it, and I know where it is, but as far as access from 47, will something have to be done so they can...
They'll put a road in there, yes, yes.
And so they're responsible...
Do everything.
For that. Okay. Question asked, question answered, thank you.
And again, it would still be subject to the board's policy on the MSBU's...
That's correct. Anybody else have anything to speak for against? Not seeing none, I declared a public hearing closed.
That wasn't a public hearing, was it?
That wasn't a public hearing.
So Robbie's already made a motion.
I'm on second.
I already made a motion, so...
I got startled on all of them.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Hollinsworth, you got a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it again. I approve the tax rebate, I move to approve the tax rebate of 95% for five years for Project Ava Crest and direct county attorney draft and economic development agreement with Mike and Butter. I'll second it.
All in favor say aye. All opposed.
I'm referring to the way, uh, Mr. Dylan, Dylan talks just like butter, he's just, he's so pretty.
Mm.
Yeah, when you're perfect.
All right, my last item is another request for an incentive approval, this one's for what we call Project Flat Tire. Project Flat Tire is for the road rangers for FDOT, protect their I-10 and I-75 corridor, they're looking to put in new headquarters, um, and they would like an incentive for doing that. So what they did, the EDAB is recommending you approve a six-year tax rebate of 75% on new and improved property and 50% on their tangible property for this Project Flat Tire. And again, they went through the scorecard process as well. Um, basically, they're going to operate their service trucks, dispatch, they're gonna host quality safety meetings with DOT at their site, and, uh, they're gonna invest approximately $1.5 million in capital investment with over 50 full-time equivalent employees, all of which will earn above average salaries and receive benefits.
I, I want, can I say something?
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm gonna tell you something about this right here. I'm not a real scary person, but I tell you, when you're on the side of the road with a broken down boat, or you, you got a family that's on the side of the road broken down, these guys are heaven when they drive up. They keep them getting run over, they got tools on their truck, and most of them will do all the work for you. And, and I'm gonna tell you, years ago, me and my daughter were on a sail fishing trip with my big boat, and we were going down to West Palm, and when that guy pulled up with them flashing lights, and I had semis coming 10 inches from my back, and he, he waved them off, sent them up, I'm gonna tell you, it's, it's the safety thing, I mean, it's unbelievable. And, and if you ever have, if you ever see them, you'll tip them, I promise you, because they're good people, and it's, it's a wonderful project.
They'll be here in Lake City.
It is, it's, of everything the state's ever done, this is right, right here.
Where's the site at, that they're gonna make the capital investment at?
Off of, uh, uh, Jefferson Davis.
Okay.
Jefferson J. Davis.
Remember old sign craft?
Okay, okay, okay. Now, is the, uh, the 50 employee question, do they have 50 employees now?
I do not, no.
So they're in Jacksonville right now.
Alachua County.
Alachua County, I'm sorry, Alachua County. But they go to Jacksonville, that's what it is, their, their area.
Okay, yeah, but they, their base office is in Alachua County.
They cover a certain amount of interstate.
They, well, they cover all of District Two. Um, so all of FDOT District Two, um, all interstates within that. So they, um, they're currently housed out of Alachua County, they do have employees there, they're anticipating a few of those to come over. The 50 that we're counting will be new employees that they'll be hiring once they locate here. So they're anticipating to grow that even higher than that. Couple of things I wanted to add to with this company, um, and, and you're completely right, they're a lifesaver on the, of the interstates. But it's also free of charge. There, there is no fee associated to this, and it's available to anybody and everybody, it doesn't matter if you're driving a 1947, you know, or a 78 Pinto, I had one of those. Um, doesn't matter if it's a 78 Pinto or a 2025 Lexus. Not that, it was my first car, it was given to me. Um, but, you know, long story short, it doesn't matter who you are, what you drive, they're there to help and keep our interstate safe, keep our roadway safe. So, um, it, it's a, you know, to your point, it's a really, really good project for the county, good group of guys. They've got seven-year contracts with DOT, they just finished the, the first year of this particular contract, and this is, I think, their second or third extension. So they're really good at what they do. Um, so, uh, again, it's, um, they're moving into an existing building, so they're improving an existing building that's been vacant for a little bit of time. Um, there's a, a building in the front that was damaged during the storms that they're doing some improvements on. So they're improving existing properties that may not look the best when you're driving by, um, and they're bringing good vehicles, they're investing in fuel here locally, as well as, as, you know, paying sales tax, so on and so forth, so, um, yeah, I think that's all. Any other questions? I'm sorry.
I got a question, because I, I think, I know how they do it. How do they spot broken down vehicles, other than just looking at them? Do they have like an app with Google Maps or something that shows a stopped car?
Camera, too.
They have to have something, yeah.
They do have cameras, they, uh, which is, uh, another interesting thing that they brought up in our conversations, um, during, especially during hurricane, you know, time when they're evacuating and they're working on the highway, they have dash cams, and they, they keep that footage rolling, so they can give real-time updates to EOC as far as road conditions go, and not just waiting on, on traffic cams and things like that that may or may not be working because of conditions. These guys have live cameras all the time, so, um, they're not mechanics, they're not gonna fix your car, they're not taking business away from our local mechanics or tow trucks or anything like that. Their job is solely to get you off the interstate and into a safe location, so you can then take care of your vehicle. Um, so to, to answer that question, it's a combination of several things. Um, a lot of it's dispatch, a lot of it's camera, a lot of it's, uh, just up and down[1760.01] Um, a lot of it's dispatch, a lot of it's camera, a lot of it's, uh, just up and down riding the roads, and then that star four-one-one, right, that people call when they need help, so.
Mm-hmm.
I was trying to, I thought I was saying five-on-one, but I think it was like four. They give the number at the meeting, I could.
I couldn't remember it, I think it's.
I tell you, they, when, when it's, when it's a, a woman or with kids, they're gonna, they're gonna change your tire, they're just gonna do it.
Oh, yeah.
They're good people, good people.
And the other interesting thing too is the electricity side of things, with all of the EVs that are on the road now, is this group actually has the ability to, um, provide you a, a charge on the side of the road to get you to a charging station. So if you happen to drive a vehicle and you run out of electricity on the side of the road, they can't bring it to you in a bucket.
They'll bring a decent generator out here and charge you.
Elon must have interest in this company.
Not all of the Road Rangers have that, by the way, our, our guys do.
Thank you.
So I'll make a motion, we approve incentive, incentive approval for Project Flat Tire.
And?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Can you follow that with the, a motion to direct the attorney to draft the economic development agreement?
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, this time, staff, no, I'm sorry, open public comments, three minutes, anybody, Dylan? He just wants to take the whole show on tonight, ain't he, Robbie?
He just likes to talk.
I always got him started.
Thank you, board. Mr. Murphy, I appreciate the candor, sir. Um, I just want to let you know, this is in Mr. Hollingsworth's district, so if he is late to any meetings, he has no excuse for Flat Tire.
Looking out for you, Robbie?
Yeah.
You'll be on Facebook, Dylan.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. Three minutes, please. Just give your name and your, uh, information to the clerk, please.
All right, my name's Edward Ottinger. Uh, dressing the RV parks and campsites, uh, been working on mine for about a year. And, uh, my engineer Lance Jones, about two days before we got ready to file it, put a moratorium on it, stop it. Well, mine's in the process, mine's gonna be fifty-five and older, I'm only gonna have thirty sites on my eight acres that I own. I am in the process of buying another eleven acres that enjoys the property, uh, from my family. But I only have eight acres with nothing on it, but a little workshop, uh, and I've got, all the campsites will be shaded to where you're not out in the sun, because I lived in RV working at FPNL down south, and in the middle of the day, when I had a Sunday off, it, you can't cool it off, it won't stay cool. All that being said, I had my site set up thirty by a hundred, thirty foot wide by a hundred foot long, which is bigger than any sites I know of in Columbia County right now. Uh, it's gonna be a, like I said, a fifty-five and older retirement community, it's behind G and K Nursery, and there's a, a, a mobile home park beside it. Uh, there'll be two ways to access it, one's four forty-one, the other one will be, uh, Alfred Markham. Um, but it'll be a plus to the community, you know, it'll be not, not, nothing, every, nice big sites, uh, all shaded, there'll be a dog run, uh, 'cause everybody has dogs now, so there's gonna be a dog run, there's gonna be a laundry and a bathroom. Uh, also a small, uh, convenience, you know, like maybe, uh, uh, vending machines, so you wouldn't have to go anywhere just for a soda or a snack or something like that. Uh, but all that being said, I've been planning on this for a few years, you know, when those last few, those things they throwed out were impossible, I, you know what I mean, twenty acres and, you, you know what I mean, I'm right beside two pieces of commercial property. When it's all said and done and built, you won't even be able to see it, but the, the, from the nursery and the, the, uh, trailer park that's there, you know. And I've talked with everybody around me, and you know, they're one hundred percent for the, plus to the community, you know. So, uh, I just wanted to say that, that I had prepared that, you know, and I just, that would bust my bubble and, you know, I've, my, my family's owned that property for about seventy years. Uh, uh, but thank you.
Ms. Ottinger, you, you live out there for him?
Yes, sir, you know, Tim, I know you, Tim, my, my brother worked for you a little bit, uh, I live right there where you come up.
Okay.
Uh, we had just split it, the, uh, my niece got two acres, I got eight, and I'm buying, my brother Sam passed away, I'm buying his eleven acres.
Well, what we'll do is we'll make sure you got proper information to be here during that workshop and everything, we'll look forward to trying to work with you.
I pre, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
You know, it's kinda ironic, you said, kinda ironic, you said thirty by a hundred, that's exactly what I got in my notes here. That's over double the size of the lots now that we require, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I make sense, I, I walked it off, I looked at other campgrounds. You know, I put a lot of research into it, because I lived in the campground down south, where, you know, they're jammed up on top of each other. Uh, I, I got their rules and regulations that I'm also gonna apply. Uh, I'm doing some roadwork and all in there, where everything will be a smooth transition, it'll be all grass in there. All the animals that are there are still there, and will still be living in there, the deer, the gophers, the turkeys, they'll be right up, there'll be a little fence around.
Well, just make sure that you bring Lance with you, 'cause you gotta get your money's worth out of him, so we'll see you at the workshop.
All right, thank y'all, Tim, thanks, buddy.
It's good seeing you.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
How you doing?
Good.
My name is Daniel Bumgarner, and, um, I kinda had a question and an issue at the same time. Um, I'm pretty sure you're familiar with the situation, but right now, the water management, the Swanee Water Management took Jeffrey Hill's property, and, um, my parents are one of the properties that are on the property that they took, along with the neighbor at the end of the street, Mike Shook.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, they, my parents have been there for twenty-five years, and Mike's been there for twenty-seven, and now we just got a letter in the mail that stated that they had a year to get off the property.
Do y'all know anything about this? Any of y'all know anything about it?
I, I do.
You do?
Okay. It's not in my district, but I'm well aware of where he lives and.
I, I don't know what's happening, but I don't know, I, 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 I just, Mike Shook called me and I said, Mike, I don't, you know, I don't know what's going on, so.
There was a meeting today.
I think staff is kind of handling that. Oh, they are, okay.
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in, I'm in contact with the one.
Okay.
So.
So do we just wait and see what plays out?
You got an attorney on your side.
Mr. Mr. Bumgarner, we know each other, right? We've never met personally, okay, so unless a judge shows, unless somebody shows up with a court order that tells you you have to leave, don't leave.
See, they got a cert, I'm, my property's faithful, I don't mind.
I know, I know where you're at, I know where you're at. Unless somebody shows up with a court order that tells you you have to leave, don't leave.
Yeah, he.
That's just good advice.
He got a certified letter, and it stated, you know, everything, you had to leave, whatever. Um, we just, I, I didn't know where to go, and 'cause this is all hearsay, but from what I understand, Jeffrey's son owns his piece of property like a couple blocks away, but it's encased in all the land, all the land that they took. And he has a pole barn next to his house that is in their property, and they're giving him the option to purchase it.
Mm-hmm.
If the option to purchase my parents' land was available, I would purchase it.
Absolutely.
So, you know, Harvey.
If, if I could just.
Dan Bumgar.
Oh, okay.
I mean, he's, he's seventy-seven years old, he can move, and he owns the mobile home that's there, just not the property.
And I think Mike Shook's been there thirty years.
Twenty-seven, and he owns his as well, but he doesn't own the property, and see, Jeffrey had made the deal with both of us, if, you know, we're gonna sell it, the option would be there to buy, but then they took the land, and now it's, you know, and there's no way that he can move like that. So he's scared to death right now, he's seventy-seven and doesn't know what he's gonna do. So I'm just kinda stepping in to try to take care of, you know, whatever, but I don't really know where to go with this.
So, so Mr. Bumgar, again, I'm, I'm gonna say it one more time, just make sure you hear me. Unless somebody shows up with a court order that says you have to leave. Now, before that court order ever comes, you'll be served with a complaint, there'll be all sorts of things that have to happen. So just sit tight. Like I said, I'm in communication with the water management district, I'm aware of the situation. Um, we're trying to do whatever we can, counties can only do so much, but I promise you, the attention of the board has been gotten, my attention's been gotten, the county manager too, we're all working on it.
Okay, that's why I showed up, I didn't know if anybody else knew that this was going on, so.
We all, we all know. My, my little brother actually called me, said, the guy watches my cars, about to lose his house, I mean, I've had.
Gotta watch your car, yeah.
But he called me, I said.
I have been talking to Mike all of last week, so.
And Mike can talk.
Just let these guys here handle it, please.
I've got a million calls from him on my phone today, so.
Let Mike know.
We'll, we'll stay on top of, I'll be right around the corner, right?
I appreciate y'all, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, uh, yes, ma'am.
Marcia Kazmersky, six hundred Northwest Clubview Circle. Um, uh, it's to that opt-out tax exemption. Hmm, my, about six to ten years ago, the property that you've designated, they want to do the, that low-income housing, our neighborhood got together, it's near the Lake City Country Club. We got together to point out to Daniel Craps that that property was not appropriate for what he wanted to do, which was some, um, apartments with the parking underneath and the cement runoff. The retention pond there, down behind the hospital, it overflowed onto the golf course. The lake said pumps weren't working to carry all the water off at that time. And then now, as you know, Toyota dealership is going in across the street from that property, and we're already gonna be hit with poor traffic circulation. It, two lanes into the hospital, there's a new motel, the roadhouse expanded, and people don't know how to make left turns out of there in the first place. It, it's just, it's gonna be a mess.
Oh, I know.
And if there's any way can opt out in two more years, do it, thank you.
Well, Ms. Kazmersky, I know Robbie hasn't shared this with you yet, but, uh, his paving, his local paving money that he gives, like all of us get, he's in, uh, he's in the process of building a bridge right across, uh, hole number three, it's gonna go across the lake, come out here below Lowe's, okay, so.
Ms. Kazmersky, Ms. Kazmersky, don't believe anything you hear from the chairman, that's why we made him chairman, he's good at telling stories. But you've known me since I was a little kid, you know I'm not gonna do that.
I think everybody in town's hung out at her house time.
Yes, sir. She didn't know, she had so many kids, she didn't know if it was hers or anybody else's.
I can't believe she's up there talking so nice to us.
I know you have, since I was five years old.
She don't wanna tell the story about all the neighbors wanting to run all the kids and Dr. Kaz out of the neighborhood, 'cause whoever's making too much noise with Volkswagen.
I remember Dr. Kaz, he'd grab you to do something to you, and it would hurt so bad, you'd, oh, and he'd go, oh, you big baby. Yeah, it ain't gonna hurt you, it did hurt.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Kazmersky. Up there from the county manager.
Yes, um, we received a, um, letter from the First Baptist trustees of the First Baptist Church. Uh, this is something that's been going on for many, many years, the grass lot next to the First Baptist Church, where sometimes we're parked and sometimes we don't park. Anyway, they approached us, wanting us to negotiate a lease agreement for five years, at eighteen thousand per year with thirty percent annual increase, uh, quarterly or semi-annual payments for at least for five years, extension's negotiable, and, um, approximately point eight acres. Uh, any discussions that we've had do not include any physical improvements to the site. I wanted to bring that to the board's attention, I'll put it on the next agenda.
You say twenty-eight acres?
No, point oh eight.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Twenty-eight, man, it's been a long, you were looking at these.
Twenty-eight.
I said twenty-eight, I said, that's.
Eight zero acres.
Okay.
Eight zero acres.
Okay.
And I'll put it on the next agenda, um, but they would like us to consider that. Um, their concerns are we've been using their property, um, they're concerned about liability issues with that, our use of their property. Uh, I know is when Ben Scott was county manager, we talked about that lot, and they talked about wanting us to pave it and put in retention ponds, that is not this. As is, they wanna lease it as is, just a grass lot.
Well, we use it quite a bit already, so I think we should work out an agreement with them.
Yeah, we.
So I'll put it on the next agenda.
Need a parking lot built out in front of the courthouse.
Where?
Yeah.
You didn't go to the city council meeting. That's our problem.
The other thing, if the board will, um, grant us some leeway, um, Stosh went to Tallahassee today, and if you'd like, we can have him tell you what he learned in Tallahassee.
Absolutely, he's got some good news to share with us, and don't wanna keep him out too late.
Stosh, we really appreciate you leaving town like that in such short notice and getting that done, okay?
Yeah, no problem, save the best for last, right?
That's right.
All right, so the, uh, big rural package that, uh, President Albretton was talking about, the, the rural renaissance, uh, came out yesterday, it was filed, and we, um, the, one of the biggest wins in that package, and it's a, it's a fluid document, so it's not complete yet, it's not signed into law, is that they will raise the fiscal, uh, constrained definition from, if you were to raise one millage rate, you would get five million dollars in revenue, that's what defines fiscally constrained counties. Under this bill, that would raise, um, if you were to raise the millage rate, one whole mill rate, under, this new definition is ten million dollars. So that would keep our county, as well as our other, uh, fellow small counties, in, in the fiscally constrained definition for a long time. Um, they are, the, the bill also moves a lot more revenue, communication service tax revenue, um, into, into the coffers, so there would be a lot more revenue from that coming from the state. Also, um, uh, scrap, which I know is something we always talk about every year, um, there would be more money for scrap this time around, and I think they're gonna, they wanna, um, double the amount for scrap, um, which would be good for us. And also allow for capacity improvements if the DOT sees fit, so we can apply for capacity improvements, uh, as long as the DOT signs off on it, which was not, uh, allowed in, in the, the bill, in the statutes before. So those are the really big wins, um, they wanna create an office of, um, rural opportunity under Department of Commerce. Um, they want actually to have staff within rural counties to, to visit rural counties, rather than just being, Tallahassee, we go to them. And, uh, there's a couple of other provisions for rural school districts and rural healthcare workers and hospitals, so. Uh, the bill's not done yet, but that was something that, that, that dropped yesterday, and it was good to see that fiscally constrained definition change, which is something we've been advocating for, for the last few years now.
That's a huge deal.
Big deal.
Big. Thank you, Stosh.
Yeah.
Thank you, buddy.
Thank you a lot. And, uh, I've been here eight and a half years, and that was the conversation when I came in the door, and then, of course, Kevin can contribute to, if we're talking about possibly double scrap, that, that's big. And, uh, ten million, you know, even, we talked about last year, uh, I think we already talked with Senator Brandon, uh, this year, you know, possibly extending the seventy-five thousand to eighty-five thousand, whatever that number is, this is way bigger than that. This is way bigger than that, I mean, I don't know that there'll be many of us around when, you know, we get to that capacity, when a mill raises ten mil.
What senator introduced this? Albretton?
No, this is a priority. This is a priority for President Albretton, but, uh, the, the two that are running the bill is Representative Jason Schof, which is next door to us, and Senator Corey Simon in the Senate.
Okay.
That's big.
Well, I need to thank them.
Yeah.
Well, and they, these are the people we need to reach out to, because they, uh, this rural renaissance, that the senate president, we probably won't see again in quite some time, a, a rural senate president, this is a big deal.
And so the bill is fluid, so they're still gonna be adding things and tweaking things, so I'll, I'm keeping an eye on it.
We appreciate it, Stosh. Good news. Okay, Commissioner comments, Mr. Parnell? Price of hay going down?
Uh-huh.
Price of hay going down?
Oh, it ain't going down, that's for sure, if anything, it's gonna go up a little bit. Shoot, I made some investments today, as a matter of fact, or some things, but we'll save it for another conversation. Guys, I, I've been here about two months now, a little over two months, and y'all have really welcomed me and showed me a lot, so I appreciate the welcoming, it's been great, and I appreciate all the efforts put into it, and how we work together on things for the betterment of our commi, our community and our county, it's been great, and I really appreciate that, so thank you, all.
Thank you.
Thank you, bud.
Mr. Ford?
Yeah, I have one that I wanna talk to y'all about a little bit. Uh, so as Joel mentioned earlier, me and him was at the, um, Lake Shore Hospital Authority meeting, last two meetings, actually. Uh, they have a proposal on the table with Palms Medical Group. Uh, we introduced a new proposal to them at the last meeting with the, uh, Health Department, Columbia County Health Department. Uh, basically, the Health Department can provide primary care, a nurse and secretary for three hundred and fifty a year, max. Uh, and we're asking, I, I'm asking the Lake Shore Hospital Authority to go that route instead of Palms Medical. That way they can provide primary care in Lake City three days a week, Fort White two days a week. And the difference between Palms and the Health Department is
And the difference between Palms and the Health Department is they have a sliding scale all the way to zero, so they, they can, i- if you can't pay, they will still see you. At the, at the, uh, years ago, they had a facility, well, we still have the facility in Fort White. We maintain a building now in Fort White for the Health Department where they used to do, provide primary care, care down in Fort White two days a week. That funding got canceled few, from years back and they haven't had that. Uh, Health Department had, has not had that in place. But the agreement with Palms is five and a half million dollars. That would fund this program with the Health Department for roughly twelve years.
Yep.
You know, so to me, it's a much better option. Uh, I would ask other commissioners to look into it and if, see what y'all think about it and if you agree with me, if you would contact the Hospital Authority Board and let them know your opinion. Uh, I don't know where they're, which way they're headed on this, but, uh, I, I think it would be, it would benefit much more people in the county through the Health Department, so.
I'm, I'm totally in agreeance with that too, on that, I mean, it's not knocking Palms by any means, but Palms has an office a mile and a half.
Mile away walking this.
Yeah, you can walk to it, two miles on the road from, from this area already. So if we give it back to Health Department, I think we'll see a lot more, it'd be more beneficial to the community and Fort White can take advantage of it too. I used to work for Health Department, so I know when they were down in Fort White, they did a lot of good work down there.
Yeah.
Um, and that would be great, and especially if they, they have all the programs that they need and that sliding scale really helps, cause now if, if you don't have the funding, you can still be seen and receive the care that you need, uh, versus, I, I believe, and I, again, not knocking Palms, but if you don't have any money or you don't have anything there.
You don't pay at Palms first time, you don't go back.
Yeah, you don't go back, so therefore, I, I believe the Health Department would be more beneficial than, than Palms. And that, again, not knocking Palms, they do good work, I know people that work at Palms, but I believe the Health Department would be beneficial to the community more so than Palms would be.
Well, Commissioner Ford, talking to David the other day, I, I appreciate you taking the, the lead on this, it's, it sounds like a great idea. Uh, it's definitely covered and ended its needs. Uh, well, uh, I'll definitely, for one, speak out and reach the day on a couple of the other, uh, board members, give my encouragement. But I, it's, it's a great idea and I'd love to, as, uh, I think I shared with you, I was going to a physician down in Fort White just to get out of the traffic lakes and, uh, but anyway, he was my pick, but he's gone now, you know, so Fort White definitely, and every time I went there, there was a lobby full of people that needs there.
No healthcare in Fort White available right now.
Yep, none at all, yeah. Uh, rather than not, the, the, I'm gonna wanna stick to the way we're doing, but save it for the next time, cause I seen you jump out of your seat, so. You get you, you get you a, a thing prepared for the next meeting, but, uh, Phillips, you got anything?
Um, I wanna echo the Health Department taking that thing over too, I think it'd be the best, best deal for our options rather than the Palm Medical. Uh, and one other thing I would like to express my opinion about, we're having trouble getting septic tank permits and drain field permits. And we're, we need to see if we can help that problem, I know the problem is coming out of a live book, I'm sure, but. State of Florida, anyway, we're, we've, we've, I know people's got apartments and what have you and the septic tanks are backing up in the building and you can't get a permit to go fix your drain field, so you have to pump a septic tank two or three times before you can get a permit, where you've done spent a pile of money trying to get and keep the stuff out of somebody's building. So that's the only comment I have.
Yeah, and, and, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but all that permitting through state, through state?
Absolutely, through state.
Yeah, so I mean, I think all we can do, Commissioner Phillips, is just let them know we're having a problem.
Yeah, we have.
And, and, and Commissioner Phillips is not wrong, it's, it's, actually, it's been a, it's been a problem for about five years. It's, the problem is not getting any better, if anything, it's getting worse.
Is this, is this, uh, uh, is this because of the reason the E P took this over?
Not completely, it's, uh, they, they've, they're short of help, they're, they're trying to, they're trying to, uh, basically do several counties out of one health department and it's just, it's, I, I tell people all the time, I used to go walk in the Health Department, get a permit and walk out in ten minutes, go put tank in that afternoon. Now if I can get one in a month, I feel like I've done good.
Wow, wow.
Good lord.
That's crazy. That's crazy.
And, and I won't tell you, uh, Commissioner Phillips, Columbia County is probably one of the better counties in the state right now.
Sure is, yeah.
And we're, and we're still waiting for it. I mean, South Florida, I'm, I'm hearing stories down there, six months to get a permit.
It seems like there should be some expedient, you know, setup to expediate it on a repair, most especially.
Yeah, for a repair.
I mean, you're talking about waste going to some, some.
The way it's set up, the repair permit really is supposed to be, tried to be issued within two days, but it's not happening.
Well, well.
Commissioner Ford, is this, within the industry, is this part of the legislature trying to push away from septic tanks in general?
No, I don't think so.
You know?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think that's the case, uh, it's, it's more, there's an internal fight with D E P and Health Department and that's, that's a lot of it, I think, so, yeah.
Robbie, anything?
Nothing.
Yeah? Okay, uh, Joel brought it up, uh, when we were dealing with the park for Troy here earlier about the Florida Building Code going up to five thousand dollars. Versus four thousand, well, at four thousand, it was grossly, uh, abused here in Columbia County. I was hoping Troy'd sit around, cause he, he, he wouldn't sleep a wink tonight when I get. But, uh, with the five thousand dollar deal, it's fixing to get even worse. So, uh, I'm gonna have a need replacement the first of March and while I'm sitting there doing my little recoup, I'm gonna bring, bring back a proposal that I've been kinda pondering around in my head, working through with Joel, but, uh, there, in the state of Florida, statute says in order to sell these steel buildings you see out there, you gotta, on that contract, it's gotta be a dental contractor, but guess what? And a dental contractor pulled a permit, nowhere's in the state of Florida, but that's fixing to change in Columbia County.
Mm-hmm.
The, uh, and we can, and, uh, it's just not right, because you know what Jennifer goes through to find her trash and fire assessment that we definitely need, you know, and, uh, there's a lot of abuse out there towards it and, uh, I agree with you, because we gotta put meat in this bone towards of that, when an individual rides down the road and all of a sudden you see a fifty by sixty building and you look over there, well, they have to know the permit because it only costs thirty-nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. And, uh, I looked at a contract yesterday afternoon at three o'clock, forty by forty, six inches of concrete, nice, 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 I'd live in it.
Thirty-eight hundred.
Thirty-nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Okay, so, so.
I told him I want five.
I wanna know that contract.
I think we need to, we can kinda tie everything from tonight together.
Yeah.
Live Local was a huge example of this smaller problem, right? They're gonna put in a sky rise building with three hundred units and they're not gonna pay a dime for the impact they create. These buildings you're talking about, this is fraud. This is, and the people that are getting defrauded are the taxpayers of Columbia County because people are creating impacts to our law enforcement, to our code enforcement, to our animal control, to our public work, they create all these impacts and they don't pay their fair share because we don't know they're there. So, we're gonna have this P I O officer soon. One of the things counties will do, and I hate this stuff, but it's the see something, say something notion. And I'm not saying we need to all be ratting on each other, but when people see this stuff going on, they need to understand it's in their self-interest to let us know so we can enforce the codes. If you see, what'd you say it was, a thirty by sixty?
Forty by forty.
A forty by forty, that's a huge, I've got, I've got a twenty-four by thirty, I pulled my permit and it was twenty thousand dollars. So, they don't, they don't cost four thousand dollars. So, what can happen? We can send a building official out, we can absolutely, we can already do this, we get a complaint, somebody's putting up a big old building, I don't think they got a permit. All he has to do is go, he's allowed to go on private property, he's allowed to ask whoever's doing that, can I see your permit? I don't have a permit, this is only four thousand dollars. I disagree, I know it's worth more than that, I'm shutting you down. We can then do an investigation, we can find, we can actually pull people's bank records if we need to, how much did you pay for that building? And when they commit fraud, we can tag them for it, you can get double the permit fee, you can shut that project down indefinitely. The issue is the front end, the front end, it has to start with a complaint because we don't have the folks to patrol. We, guys, people may not know this, we have one building official, right? One guy who's vested with that authority, he's the guy under statute who has all this power, but he can't be everywhere.
But the key, it, just, and I'm gonna have to pick on the steel buildings, cause I've really been checking into this thing pretty hard. As a licensed contractor in the state of Florida, it is your obligation that you being the G C on that job, the person that sells that building, your license can be revoked for not following Florida sunshine and, uh, regular Florida.
And, and I, go, I, I was just gonna, isn't there something though that says if it is truly an agriculture pole barn or something like?
That is a different exemption, so that's, that has nothing to do with the four or five thousand dollars.
Like the one I'm gonna build like you got, exactly, that, on the ag side of the thing.
So you can go buy a sixty thousand dollar pole barn and if it's a pole barn to put hay under, we don't talk about it, it's exempt.
It, it's weird, y'all know, and I guess, I guess this came up because the Gilchrist County Commissioner called me, you know, and she said, is it true y'all have, they don't, if, if it's one hundred dollars there, you, you gotta pull a permit?
There's some counties.
Five, I, I said, I said, well, what is y'all's limit? She said, well, I got a guy that wants to build a five hundred dollar lean-to to put his little boat under and he's complaining because he has to have a three hundred dollar permit to do it, and I was like, so we've really been lenient with this, by giving a five thousand, you know?
We've been within the confines of what the Florida Building Code allows, and it's, and, and so that was why Troy felt, you know, it, it allows for up to five, let's just go to five, to be consistent and consistency is good, we see that anytime we have conflict, conflicts, you just end up getting in fights, well, Florida Building Code says I can go to five, y'all only say four, now we have a big discussion, so. It makes sense to be consistent, it's fine to have the exemption as long as we enforce it. And that's Commissioner Murphy's point, and I agree with him a hundred percent, we lack the enforcement, we lack the gumption to go out and while the guys are putting the trusses up, they're like, I gotta be out of here in forty-eight hours, no boss, you're shut down. You're not to lift another hammer until you pull a permit and guess what, now it's gonna cost you twice as much to pull that permit. You're gonna do that four or five times, they're gonna stop.
They used to shut you down in Latway County, Rocky can attest to this, uh, for not having to pull the toilet out of the construction site.
And we're not like that, we're just saying.
There wasn't one there, that, that job was shut down for twenty-five.
But now, they do require one here in Columbia County too, but they are a little lenient, everybody give you a little time to get there.
Yeah, but you know, Mr. Stafford, get on that phone, shut them down. It's, uh, it's a big deal.
And I hope your need replacement goes well, but I guess I'll look for that to come back from us.
Okay, absolutely.
You have a problem.
Ms. Clark, you got anything to say, you've been off quiet tonight, normally you're running your mouth.
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, motion to adjourn.
No, no, motion to adjourn.